All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for January 2nd, 2018. My goodness, Happy New Year to everyone. Our first order is we're going to go to our police chief first. Chief Paulus, if you would join us. Presentation on proposed staffing change for FY '19. Yes, sir. Chief, welcome.
Happy New Year.
Thanks for taking the time to meet with me tonight. I believe you've already got a lot of information going back over several years. I think I first proposed this manpower plan back in September of 2015 when I had budget meetings with Town Administrator Purple and Brian Valentine. I think if you look back on that, I included in the package that we needed about nineteen and a half offices total in a department with sixteen available patrol duties. And we kind of made a plan to integrate that in over several years. And the officer that I'm asking for fiscal year starting July 1st would be the culmination of that plan. All the people that have come in this plan, they're all assigned to patrol. No specialty positions have been added. I think if you look back in the packet going back a few years, the union first approached me with this plan on a, they felt that the manpower was insufficient and that we had to come up to a certain level to provide a little bit more for their safety and the safety of the citizens. I also put together a presentation for advisory in 2016 in February. I know we're going back a few years. I had included that in last year's officer, kind of explaining where we are. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
And I'll just start, Chief, if I may. I mean, you're right. This is a continuation of a plan that was set in motion a while back. And I know we have new members and a new fiscal year, so, but this is something that we had, you had a great plan, and I still think it is a solid plan. We could forego, you know, the public safety needs and, you know, that could be at the detriment to our town and our public safety. I mean, we could also see those costs show up in overtime. You know, you've identified already in what you've submitted that there are challenges, even with the current staffing, if someone goes out on leave, if someone's on vacation, time off, whatever it might be. And so again, I remain committed to public safety. I think it's our primary concern and our primary responsibility. And, you know, this is a plan that's been put in place for a while. I'm very supportive of it, but I do want to open it up to our members. And anyone care to start? Mrs. Faniff.
Welcome, Chief. I'm the one, apparently, that had the most questions last time. I looked at your organizational chart, the previous one, and it's a swing shift that has four officers on it. And the new organizational chart that you showed, the previous one had three, the new one has four. The student officer was left off the original organizational chart. So are we just short one for one day, one evening shift every evening of every week? I'm trying to figure out where the swing officers fit into this schedule. I know I tried to follow what you sent me. So am I looking at it the same way?
You'd have to look at the roster and the swing offices. Some work two evenings and two midnights. One officer works two day shifts and two evenings. I think as part of a plan that I had when we added the sergeant, I have one sergeant working a swing shift of seven at night to three in the morning. That covers four days a week, and then he, his days off rotate. So that was part of the plan when I hired the extra sergeant to get an extra body and more supervision. So he'd be included in the swing shift officer. I think you have to look at that roster that we use every day.
I have it.
And you have to start looking at it, saying, okay, on Thursday, who's scheduled for the three to eleven shift? Who's scheduled for the eleven to seven shift? And the roster that I submitted to you, that's with nobody taking a day off. So mostly right now, I won't get into numbers.
No, that's all right. I don't need the numbers, but we are utilizing the four officers on that swing shift.
Yeah, they're different, different swing shifts.
Regardless of the hours, they're filling in as staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
They're not filling in just for overtime or?
Oh, no, no. They're scheduled, they're part of the schedule, so if one officer works, if you see it on the schedule, so if his swing shift is two evenings and two overnights, you'll see he works three to eleven one day, three to eleven the next day, then eleven to seven, then eleven to seven. It works out well. The officers like it, and it keeps them fresh. And working just third shift straight is a real strain on the body and, you know, family life. So officers, they approach me with that, and it works out well.
Okay. My questions have been answered. It had more to do with the organization.
Okay. My apologies. That needed to be updated and, you know.
My interpretation.
All right.
It's fine.
Any other questions for the chief? Ms. Brockio, please.
Mine's more of a comment versus a question. I wholeheartedly agree with what Mr. Kalenda has said, that this has been a plan that's been in place for a long time, and I think our public safety is the one thing we need to fully staff for safety of our officers as well as our citizens. So I am fully in support of moving forward with this plan as well, and thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? None?
None.
All right. Chief?
Very appreciative, and I think I wrote at the end of my letter, I've worked with a few selectmen since I've been here in 2014, and everybody that I've worked with has been very supportive of the police department. And on behalf of my staff, we're all sincerely appreciative. So thank you.
Same here, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to the Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee. We have a final report, so it's been provided to us. I trust every member has read it. So to that end, we won't need a verbatim review of every item in there, but please give us your highlights and your recommendation, and state who you are and welcome.
Hi. I'm Francesca Gillespie, I'm the chair of the St. Mark's Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee. Actually, I think the official title doesn't have St. Mark's in it, but. And I'd like to thank the selectmen for having us here before you tonight, and I want to introduce the committee that was appointed by you. Benjamin Smith is my vice chair, and he represents the Conservation Commission. I have, going down the line, Ed Pearson, he's at large, going away so people know who you are. Andre Fortin, he's Golf Course Committee rep. Ed Pearson, he's the, oh, I already said, started with him, I'm sorry for reading this. Getting a little nervous, sorry. And Dave Candela, Recreation Commission rep. And I particularly would like to let the Board of Selectmen and the people in the room and at home know how appreciative we are of Beth Rosenbloom, who is an ex-officio, non-voting member from the Conservation Commission Administrator, and she was the clerk of our work, and without her, we could not have accomplished what we did. They're often the unsung heroines and heroes of boards and committees, the ones that take the minutes. Town Council Aldo Supriano, who provided the drafts and review and excellent advice to us, and Luke Legere, he's special counsel. And also, we had, she's not here tonight, but the committee asked to help assist us, was Krista Collins, the Sudbury Valley Trustees Director of Land Protection. And are you expecting me to roll this through? Because I don't know how to do that. Do you know how to? So up here, in case anyone doesn't have a copy, is our draft of our report of the committee. And the first thing we do is list all the documents we went through. There's a, let's see, eighteen of them. Then we go through the six meetings we had, which also included a public forum. And we also talk about selectmen and other members that attended our meetings in the next paragraphs. So a lot of, we had many revisions of the draft conservation restriction. We went through it. Luke would do revisions. We would read them and come up at our next meeting and have more revisions. I'm forgetting off the top of my head how many revisions there were, but we were meeting almost every week since November 9th, around the holidays. And one of the first things we discussed and was the biggest part of our conversation aside from what went into the CR, was the proposed holder of the conservation restriction, which was part of our charge to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And to do that, one of the first things we needed to do was to go over what exactly a conservation restriction is. We had a committee that was pretty new to that concept. And the issue is, when you have a conservation restriction, the person who owns the land determines which developmental rights they're willing to give up. And then the person who's holding the CR, their job, once you have a bona fide town, I'm sorry, state-approved conservation restriction, their job is to see that what's in that restriction that the town decides to enter into is held to the standard that it's written in perpetuity, forever. So the rights and the interests of the town are developed during the conservation restriction. That's where we go through it thoroughly and see what the town is willing to relinquish as far as our development rights and the use of the land in perpetuity, which means forever. And then the holder of the CR, their job is to ensure that that is actually upheld the way the town people wanted it to when we voted at annual, I mean, special town meeting to purchase the land in the warrant article, and in this process where we've been going through it with numerous conversations with the committee, who represented other boards and entities, and we had a public forum. So at that point in time, when you create the conservation restriction and it's recorded, that's the done deal. That's where the town's interests are represented and decided upon. After that, it's purely a matter of who's going to make sure that what we say in that restriction is done forever, followed to the letter of the law in that contract. That's what we were considering, we thought, who would be the best holder of the conservation restriction. Prior to our committee's meeting, the Sudbury Valley Trustees had indicated, because the Open Space Preservation Commission, which created, drafted the amendment that was passed at town meeting, we had been in communication. Could this even be something that could be done? Would they be willing to hold it? Is there a land trust willing to hold a conservation restriction? Early on, they said they haven't held a conservation restriction on a golf course, and they weren't really interested in doing so. In the course of, it's been over a year since those conversations started, and the week before our committee met, they indicated that because this is becoming a more common practice, they're actually working on one, to hold one for the town of Maynard, that they, their committees and their board had met and had numerous conversations, and they actually were willing to hold a conservation restriction. Based on that information, we looked at who would be the best holder, and we did have town councils' advice or recommendation that it be the Southborough Open Land Foundation with the Conservation Commission as co-hoster. Well, we heard from SVT, who wasn't going to co-hold or hold a CR that didn't, how do I say, they weren't going to step on the toes of the local land trust. SVT and the Southborough Open Land Foundation work hand in hand. Many of the Southborough Open Land Foundation's properties have conservation restrictions on them that are held by Sudbury Valley Trustees. Additionally, we're aware that Sudbury Valley Trustees helped us do the deal for the Chestnut Hill Farm Conservation Restriction. They wrote the baseline survey for that restriction, as well as the town hires them every year to go out and monitor it. In this report, I don't know if you want to scroll down so people can see it a little We list the qualifications of SVT. Just putting that somewhere. Okay. Sudbury Valley Trustees own six properties in Southborough for a total of 34.4 acres. They also hold six conservation restrictions in Southborough totaling 223 acres. I'm reading this because it's important background. I'm not going to read everything in here, but in addition to that, SVT holds a total of 22 CRs on more than 25,000 acres in 21 surrounding towns, and they own 89 reservations for 2,300 acres in 18 surrounding towns. They're the professionals, they're experienced at it, this is what they do, they have staff, they've been in business for over 70 years. Based on that, their professional status, the ability, the fact that they're willing to hold it, it changed our conversation to looking at having them as the sole holder. And while the Conservation Commission, we totally respect, it creates a level of complexity that's not required in this. The town's needs are protected by making sure what's in the CR are in the CR. That's why we've been working so hard at making sure it had everything that what we said we wanted at the town meeting, and what the different entities, you have conservation, open space, recreation, and the neighborhood or an at-large member, and someone from the Gulf. We did not just check off, check off, oh yeah, that's okay. We had, as Luke can attest to, very detailed conversations on minute details that could make you tear your hair out, but they were important. And through that process, we found things we hadn't at first known or thought was going to be an issue, and at the last minute, something came up about the potential for there needing to be a pond. Nowhere had it ever been said, we need a pond here, we might need a pump house. Those are things that are required if you have irrigation. If they're not written in as an allowed use in the CR, they can't happen after the fact. That's the level of detail we went through. And I will have to say, I am very proud of the committee and the work we did. We have different opinions, you know, open space, conservation, recreation, and golf. We really discuss things thoroughly, and almost by the end, everything in the CR and everything in this report was supported unanimously. So we also had a public forum. Unanimously, the opinion at that public forum was to have SVT as the sole holder, not to have a co-hoster. And the reality is that the concern about the Conservation Commission is this CR needs to get done per town meeting vote. If you have co-holders, now you have to have a memorandum of understanding where this has to be negotiated. It's another contract, another level of complexity. Who's going to be in charge of what? It could take months, and it could derail this before it ever gets to EOEA. And then there's the fact, if what we come up with in that memorandum of understanding is even acceptable to the land trust. The other towns have sole holder, Newton's is the CR that we look to, they have sole holder by a conservation trust. It's not a land trust, but it's a nonprofit. The town does not co-hold that. Other towns we've heard on Martha's Vine, I mean, on Nantucket also have the land trust. We don't see there's any value in added protection, but actually, there's added responsibility to the Conservation Commission that we've had indication that they're not capable of handling. And there was also a issue of an endowment. Everyone we spoke to felt that the dollar amount of that endowment for SVT in perpetuity was peanuts compared to what it would cost the town. And additionally, as a co-hoster, they're probably likely to ask for the same amount of money. They're going to ask for an endowment anyhow, because no land trust is going to hold it and just say, oh, we're not going to be responsible for any of our obligations. They're going to need an endowment so they can pay for that, they're going to need the legal insurance, they're going to need some monies for doing monitoring. They're not going to just say, oh, the town, you do it, we're here in name only, and we have no obligation or responsibility. That's not their job in why a land trust is formed. They're not going to be a holder in name only. So based on that, and for, these aren't numbered, they're bullet points, but there's, I don't know, three pages of reasoning, why we chose SVT as the sole holder is our recommendation. And that was a very big decision, and we didn't make it lightly. I think we discussed this at every meeting we had. Additionally, in our report, well, also, we noted, and I don't know if you want to see this now, maybe if you have questions later, we can answer them. We came up with a conservation restriction based on the information we had. It was almost, we had to postpone the public hearing because we had no plan. When we did get a plan, it was basically just an outline of the land, a survey. In the CR, you'll notice there's things called envelopes. And for, I'm assuming the selectmen understand this, but maybe some of the people in the room don't. When you have a conservation restriction, you restrict the use of the property. But on this one, we know we're going to have the septic system for the public safety and the Woodward School. That has to be in an envelope which has its own description of what can be done there. That envelope has to be shown on a surveyed plan within the plan of the property. There's the golf clubhouse and the parking. Those uses are not allowed throughout the property, they have to be in an envelope. There's a maintenance building, and it's parking and septic. That has to be in an envelope. There is the relocation of the first and ninth hole. That's going to cause land disturbance that's not allowed in the restriction. That has to have an envelope. What an envelope means, as you go in, you survey the area that that land is going to be allowed to be disturbed in the way that's written for that envelope. So I think I just listed the septic, the clubhouse and parking, the maintenance building, and the relocated tees. That's four envelopes. Not one of them has been shown on a plan that we saw. The Golf Course Committee hasn't finished their work. It wasn't until our last meeting that we found out about, when we said irrigation, that they needed a place to put the pond. We thoroughly discussed it and came up with the area that was allowable within the relocation of the tees that could be used, but we haven't heard back that the Golf Course Committee has met and said that's where it could go, and that's what needs to happen. There are things here that can change. And for that reason, amongst the fact that once you have asked someone to hold the CR, that holder or co-holders, depending on your vote, will then negotiate with the town on what's in the CR. The CR we have created tonight is not a final document. It's the final document of the information available at the time our committee was working. There is more information coming down the road. The public safety could come up with something else. Their work's not done. These buildings have not been permitted. Until all of that is on the plan, you have the co-hoster or holder of the CRs agreeing to what's in the CR. At that point in time, it goes to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, EEA. They may send it back for more revisions because they don't like what's in it. Throughout all these stages, it makes sense that the Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee that has intimate knowledge of every line in the CR, and I don't think anyone else besides Luke and probably Aldo have as much knowledge of what's in the CR and how it came about. It makes sense to have them being the reviewers to give the selectmen and the townspeople some greater confidence in this is what was intended as we were moving along, and there's not a word here or a word there that changes things just a bit that makes it different than what was intended. And that if some changes have to be made, I think you want to have your Conservation Commission rep, your Open Space Commission rep, recreation, the neighborhoods, and the golf committee sitting down together and again, looking at it and able to hopefully come to a unanimous decision that, yes, these changes that are being asked for from this document make sense or in the best interest of the town. Because again, this document is in perpetuity. That means forever. It's a long time. We want to get it right, and I think you have a committee that has shown its really great commitment and great knowledge that they brought to the table, and their willingness to sit down and, you know, discuss some, you know, difficult disagreements and come out unanimously in agreement. For that reason, we asked that our charge for the committee recognizing absolutely that you originally wanted us to January 1st, and I think we did an awesome job. I couldn't be prouder of the work product, given the under two months from the first time we met on November 9th, with Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas and Thanksgiving holidays in the mix, to meet and come up with this quality of a product and this report. So that was the second thing. And the third thing we asked for was that the Community Preservation Committee has a placeholder for an endowment for a land trust to hold the CR, and we asked that you write a letter of support or, you know, work on an application to the CPC, because those warrant articles for annual town meeting have to be to the, you know, in a few weeks or less than two weeks to the, to Mark Purple. It's a placeholder now, but that's just because we knew it might be coming. It needs the selectmen to make the application. We can work with you on it, but I think we want a letter that you want to move in that direction. And then additionally, we made a recommendation that the committee respectfully asked the Board of Selectmen to work on fully funding the clubhouse relocation and whatever needs to be done to keep the golf course in operation between now and when they can come back to do the relocation of the tees, to keep it open during construction. The townspeople voted for a golf course there. We've heard from many entities that if it's out of business for a year, you may not ever get it back up and running. It will not necessarily, it will be hard to become fiscally viable in the near term, and that we're hoping, just to lend our support, that that gets funded, because the other thing we know, from the Open Space Commission's perspective, people, if that's not a golf course, people want that kept open in a park-like situation with the historic landscape views, heritage views we have. I'm aware of what it takes to keep, to manage land, because I work on the stewardship committee for Breakneck Hill. The best way to keep that land in the view that people want is to have a golf course there. Whether you're a golfer or not, keeping the golf there ticks off the boxes of what people want on that property. The view, and then the passive recreation, the winter sports, people are out there cross-country skiing and snow shoeing and sledding right now, so, well, maybe not now, it's a little cold, but there's, you know, when it was a little warmer and snow. So I think that's the end of what I want to say, unless you have questions about what's on the plan and other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gillespie. So, and we'll hear from council and special counsel shortly, but there may be questions for Ms. Gillespie and the committee. You, if I may ask you, you made a statement about a minute or so ago that we crafted the CR. Can you let us know, who, did you craft the CR? Did council and special coun, council craft this year?
Was.
Okay. It was a group effort. It was a group effort. When you said we, I didn't know if you were speaking on behalf of your group that crafted this.
I didn't mean I did it, that's for sure.
Okay, well, that's how it came out. So I didn't want to, there to be any confusion that the committee did not craft the CR.
I think when I-
It was done as a group.
I think when I first introduced everyone, I said we had excellent advice from Aldo Cipriano, our town council, and Luke Legere, who, sorry about the name, sorry. If anyone's seen the video.
No, it's fine.
Luke was at every single meeting. We made our recommendations. He brought it back to his office, made adjustments, came back, we discussed it, made other adjustments, went back at least three or four times, I'm thinking. So yeah, it was a, it was certainly written by an attorney.
Yeah, it seems to be a very collaborative effort. I think there, do I understand that the only disagreement between the committee and council is who should own, who should really hold the CR? Is that fair? Is everything else in there, does it look good from the committee's perspective in conjunction with council's review?
The committee unanimously supported the, I shouldn't say that. The committee was in agreement on everything in the CR and in everything in this report. We went down the line and it was yes all the way for both. Could there be changes made that people might want if it's opened up again for discussion?
So the only, but the only material disagreement right now-
Yes.
-between the committee and council for the town is who should, who should hold the CR? Is that-
Yes.
Okay. Questions for the committee? Ms. Fanna?
Thank you for all of your hard work. Just a simple question. The Sudbury Valley trustees, did they send or submit a letter requesting the summer money? Do you have some confirmation of how we got to that number?
Yes, we do.
Has council had that?
It was presented at a meeting that Luke was at. Did that get to Aldo?
There was nothing in Luke Legere. There was nothing-
You need a microphone. Sorry. Yes. You can take it. It's listed in the documents.
Listed in the documents.
Do you want to take it from the podium and have a seat? It's up to you.
Yeah, thank you. Luke Legere McGregor Legere, Special Counsel assisting in the drafting of the conservation restriction. Yeah, I think it was the first, the first meeting of the committee, Krista Collins from SVT, did give us an outline of the typical costs for an endowment that SVT would require before becoming the holder of a CR. So that's where those figures come from. I don't recall seeing anything in writing, if there was something produced in writing.
There was, and I, I can excuse everyone because if you look at the 17 documents that we reviewed plus all the discussions and how many versions of the CR, after, was it our, one of our last meetings, number 17 on the list says SVT expenses and revenue, it was received on December 18th and it's two pages. I can make sure you get a copy of that. It listed out the three things that go into it. One is the-
It's the baseline documentation.
The baseline documentation, which has to be done, and the town hired them to do the one on Chestnut Hill Farm, has to be done when it goes to EOA. What a baseline documentation is, is they go around the whole property at every angle point and any area of interest. They take pictures, they GPS it, so there's a mapped GPSed point and pictures and written documentation of what's there. So the beautiful tree will be documented, the rock will be documented, and plus what the land looks like so that every year when you do your inspection, you have the book. I've gone on these, you can join them at SV, at Chestnut Hill Farm and other ones they do in town for other restrictions they hold. You take the notebook, you go around, you can look, stand in the exact spot per GPS, look at the picture, read the written documentation and see if it's as written in the original. So in 100 years from now, you will know what should be there.
All right. The follow-up to that question is, isn't that a negotiation item between the Board of Selectmen and a holder of the CR?
I imagine it is, but I imagine if you don't plan for it, that first you have to ask someone to do, hold the CR.
That's why I'm asking about the number. I don't need all of the information this evening, but it's usually a negotiating point that the Board of Selectmen, I was involved in the BLS property, so I understand some of this, but in fairness to those that weren't, I just want to know, is this, is this number firm or is it still?
I can say nothing is firm because, one, they haven't been asked, two, we're trying to do, like this conservation restriction we have isn't firm. It's just what came out of this committee based on the best information and we felt it was reasonable that the selectmen know what dollar amount of endowment we're talking about. And it's a pretty standard formula that they use.
I should say, it's based on the draft conservation restriction that you hold in your hands. And should the selectmen choose to negotiate with SVT as a holder of the CR, if there are any changes in the terms, they would then update the estimate to reflect those changes?
And they noted that what goes into this is also the complexity of the conservation restriction. Four envelopes, that's a bit of complexity. Having a golf course in operation there with irrigation, that's complexity. So it's not a simple little CR on a woodlot, let's say.
All right. And my very last question for me. The question of a coholder conservation in the Sudbury Valley trustees, personally, I'm unaware of any issues in the town of Southborough that have been brought to the Board of Selectmen, that we have not been a cooperative group together, worked together and have had any complaints. I'm not aware of any. And I put conservation, the members of the conservation right up there as being the best and working with other groups. So I'm unaware of any issues as far as a working relationship with our Conservation Commissioner members, Beth on a daily basis probably with other issues, and the Sudbury Valley and any other properties that we share together.
There is no conflict there. The conflict is, the complexity is having two people, as somebody said at one of the, I think the Conservation Commission meeting, is that it's difficult to have two bosses. Working out who's in charge of what doesn't alleviate either of the coholders of the full responsibility of holding a CR. The other part of it is, we felt it was difficult for the town to monitor itself, which is what, the reason why EEA does not allow the town to be a holder of a CR. You have to have a coholder. And if it makes sense to have a coholder based on maybe the inability of one of the holders to do as much work as is required, it can make sense. But it doesn't mean it's necessarily a good idea in all, you know, it's not commonly done.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Brockham?
Thank you. First, I would just like to commend the committee. In reading the CR, I was extremely impressed with the work you've done in such a short period of time. I believe it was six meetings. In working with councils as well, I give huge credit to all of you. You were given an undaunting task in order to get something done on a tight timeframe and the product that you've produced together is really something we as a town should be proud of and we should be proud of the work that you did. So I'll start with that. I thank you for that. I have some questions and I don't know, some are for council. I don't know how far in-depth we want to go on questions on the CR itself.
Yeah, these are for the, yeah, council will come up next and so, but these are for the committee.
Okay. One of the things, as I read through, I didn't necessarily see, and I don't know if it's required or if it's not required, is were allowances made for any impervious, potential impervious surfaces for ADA requirements that, you know, may be needed for handicap accessibility to the clubhouse and/or, I may have missed it, there's a lot to read.
We had that discussion and yes, the surfaces can be ADA compliant, but that doesn't mean pavement.
Okay.
Stone dust is certainly an ADA compliant surface. As far as ramps to get into the clubhouse, that's above and beyond what we were talking about. But we did want to know if in the future, any of the, if it wasn't a golf course, if there could be paved trails and we, the answer was, the trails you can make under this conservation restriction are very good for ADA complacency without being pavement.
Okay. Question on SVT, and I don't know if you know the answer to this or not. Is SVT a coholder on any other properties that they hold? Do they cohold typically? I'm sure normally they're the sole holder, but do they have-
We didn't ask. It didn't seem pertinent to this property and this project, you know?
I do have concerns with some of the things you mentioned with the town policing the town. That is, some of the concerns that I have, I know with CONCON being the permitting authority on work to be done for, on the conservation side and the golf course, you could also be the other side as well, authorizing the permitting authority who was yourself. And as far as policing, I think we need to be very careful and take into serious consideration on that. Not that the town will not work well together, but you just never know and I think it, it puts the town in a potentially difficult position. I know I went back and I read the Newton's conservation restriction as well and they have a sole holder on the golf course there. I actually put a call and I'm speaking to someone in the mayor's office there tomorrow to try to understand why they went with a sole holder versus something in-house. So that's just a comment. Do we know on, if you could maybe take a second Freddie and explain, I see that there's requirements that have to be done in conjunction with the CR, the baseline documentation, the existing survey, the envelope plan and possibly an A and R or a subdivision plan. How do those work in conjunction with the CR?
So, an A and R plan, I mean, we've had conflicting information about that. I originally believed that it was going to be one lot with the public safety outside of the area of the conservation restriction. At one of our meetings, town council said that there would be an A and R which subdivides the public safety off the, from the golf course. If that happens, there's opportunity for the language of the deed of just the golf course, which can certainly be different than the deed of a public safety building with a golf course on the same property, which I believe that deed has already been set. How it impacts the CR, I think we've done a really good job at writing what can go into the envelopes. But the committee's work isn't done on what they're, both the golf course committee and the public safety building committee, their work isn't done on what they're putting in for their building, their septic and what the golf course is doing. That can change the content of what they're going to want in the envelopes. I mean, I don't know, it could. We hope not. And secondly, where the envelopes are. You have to survey where the, where the space is.
So at what point in the CR does the baseline?
The baseline's separate. Now that's close, that, it gets done as close to the submittal to EEA as possible so that you're capturing the existing conditions really close to when it's recorded. Just pretend that beautiful tree falls down or a meteor hits the rock and it's not there. You want that, you know, not included as existing on the property.
So these are more moving pieces?
Those, that's moving, but the, the survey of the land has to be done before you submit it to EEA.
These are attachments to the, to the CR when it gets submitted to EEA for its review. So the, the first list, I lost the computer here, but it's a list of attachments or appendices to the CR. And then beneath that, we tried to put together, we've learned a lot about this complicated process. So to help, to help you guys as you, as you go forward with it, tried to put together the steps that need to be completed to get it across the goal line, the CR process.
Okay.
Ms. Brockham, just one moment, please. Public service announcement. So there's a black Jeep Limited, mass plate 259. It's SX9. It's parked over by the Historical Society Building. It's blocking a row of cars and some folks are trying to leave. So if that's your black Jeep Limited, feel free to move it now. Thank you.
Thank you. One comment on page two of the draft CR. It says at the bottom, second paragraph to the bottom, "The town acquired the premises in 2018." I believe that should be 2017.
Yeah, we've got to put in the right reporting information. There's a lot of little detail for the document.
Okay. That's fine. That was just one of the things that jumped out at me. On page five, it speaks about the passive recreation such as walking, sledding, birdwatching, cross-country skiing and snow shoeing. Has there been any discussion? I've had a few comments made to me about a potential dog park someday, maybe someday. Is that something that should go into this or is that, for, I mean, I would think once you do the CR, it's tough to change uses.
Dogs are not prohibited, so dogs are allowed. A dog park, unless you're putting it within-
That's a public service announcement. I've got a few questions on that.
Okay. I had, I asked myself, all right, the issue with a dog park is typically they're fenced in and the fences aren't going to be allowed. So you will, if it's not a golf course, currently now, when it's not in use as a golf course, you can walk your dog there. Right now, I'm sure you'd find dogs out there, except for it's so cold. But walking your dogs there will be an allowable use within the rules of the town or as the town, I should say it's not an allowable use. The town gets to decide. So they're not prohibited, so if in the future the town wants to say no dogs, the town has that ability. But right now, it's an allowable use. We foresee that people can walk their dogs there. A dog park, the fencing was just, you know, where are you going to put it?
Okay. And I have a couple of questions for town council, so I'll wait. But I just, in reading through on page 27, number six, estinguishment. Again, I never drafted a CR, so in doing this-
I think she's not a lawyer.
This is, this is talking about rendering the purpose of the CR impossible to accomplish, that the restriction can be, only be terminated and extinguished whether in whole or in part. Is that typical in a CR? I know, again, I've referenced Newton a lot. I've looked at Newton's and I didn't see, maybe because that was from 1980, but I was just concerned how this interacts with being in perpetuity.
It's from the model CR, I think.
This is from the model CR from EEA. I don't know why it wouldn't be in Newton, I think, and let council answer that. I'm comfortable that it's there because it's a requirement.
Okay. If it's a requirement, that answers the question.
Yeah, I'll just respond very briefly. As Freddie and Ben have alluded to, EEA has a model conservation restriction and they really want anyone applying for a CR to stick as closely to the terms and conditions and the language in there as possible. This is a great example of language that really comes right out of that model. My suspicion is that it, if it's not in Newton, it's missing because it predates the current version of the EEA model. That would be my best guess.
Okay. That's fine. I just, obviously my eyes kind of popped when I said, wait a minute, why would we ever try to, to-
And I would say that the reason for having it is so you have a process in case it needed to be done for whatever reason, instead of being silent on that.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Schifrin?
Yeah. Ms. Gillespie, thank you and thank you to your committee for the time put into this. I think my questions are more for council or councils to address when you come up based on the report that they gave. There's, I think it's advice from council that, that the town be a coholder. So I assume you're going to speak to that aspect of it when you talk. As part of that, I'm just curious if there's any type of seniority or hierarchy between the coholders and how it would work if there's conflict between the two, if we go that way. Also, if there's any known- Also, if there's any known examples of a town being a coholder at all? I did like some basic research and, and couldn't find it. So I'd just like to see where else it's being done, if it's out there. And I think the last thing is, I really like the idea of having the committee, if they can't be involved in the process getting to the finished product, at least reviewing the finished product before we vote on something, just to get their opinion, recommendation, et cetera. So I like the idea of the committee existing until this, until we have a final draft. That's all. Thank you.
So, again, I'll agree with everybody who's spoken so far. Thanks to you and to everybody on the committee for all your efforts so far. So, and while you were given an undaunting task of coming up with this document and, and these recommendations in a short time period, there's lots of other committees that have been given undaunting tasks as well, one of which is the golf course committee themselves. And we have a further, an agenda item later on to discuss the management contract for that. And I think that we need to keep, you know, the terms and conditions of that management contract, you know, in mind as we review this as well. And right now, I see the potential for a lot of conflicts. And, you know, I don't want to, I'm fully supportive of the conservation restriction. I heard loud and clear from, as this was discussed leading into that special town meeting, that this is what people want, and that I'm fully supportive of that. But we can't, in my opinion, have it so restrictive that it adversely impacts golf, because I heard very loud and clear that people want golf to continue as well. And, you know, as I read your report and your reasonings why you wanted SVT as the sole holder, I thought there were very valid reasons. I then read the draft conservation restriction, and almost felt like we needed, you know, to either, you know, modify a number of these conditions that are in here now, or else do something to give the town a say, because I think that we're, as written, I think we're giving up too much of our ability to run a golf course the way that we want to in this, and that we're having to go to SVT, you know, for, you know, review and approval on everything, you know, from how, you know, the course is going to be managed, you know, on a yearly basis. What fertilizers they want to put down and all that. And I, I just think that we need to be very, very careful, that we're not so restrictive that, you know, we're putting the golf course out of business, because we, we wouldn't be serving the, the people as well.
That was a, a big concern of ours in putting it together. And our member, Andre Forten, a member of the golf course committee, was a strong advocate for the, for the golf community. The, there was this specific thing that you bring up, the, the permission from the holder of the CR. It was, we spent a lot of time with Attorney Legere trying to craft it, believe it or not, to simplify that process. And, and the goal, that you kind of have to parse through the language to get to it. It was, it was tricky to write. The goal is, so any, any competent management company is going to have a plan for what they're going to do at the beginning of every year. They're going to, they're going to have a plan. This is going to be, they're required by law, I believe, to have, you know, a pest management plan, a vegetation management plan for pesticide use and all that kind of stuff. They're going to have their large maintenance items planned out. The granting, the seeking and granting of permission is intended to be as simple as putting this stuff together into a binder, handing it off to the grantee, and the whole process being an hour or two of going through and just making sure it's consistent with the CR. It's not, next Tuesday, they're going to go out and mow the lawn, better call up SVT. That's not, that was not the goal of it. The goal was a simple streamlined process where it would integrate with, with the workflow of the golf course management company without putting a burden on them. Does that make sense?
No, it does. Yeah, I, you know, one example I picked up on was irrigation system. Presently, tee boxes and greens, I think, is where irrigation is limited. So if in the future, let's say that the town wanted to make the investment in an irrigation system for all the fairways, to improve the playing conditions along the fairways, and have that buried piping network.
Yep.
So, A, do we need to go to the detail now where that's shown on an envelope?
That's an allowed use on the golf course overall. And going to the Sudbury Valley trustees is just, yeah, they can do it, but where and how, and it's just not, oh, you can't do it here or not. Similar to what Chestnut Hill Farm. The trustees of reservations own the land, the town has the CR. You know, they have a management plan for how they're farming there, you know? And if they're going to go outside of that, like when they went to put up fences for the livestock, they had it go, and, you know, the, it was an allowed use on the CR. The Conservation Commission wasn't saying, no, you can't do it, but they needed to make sure it was within the plan. The point you're making, though, about the management company, and Andre was very clear about having concerns that we didn't not allow the golf to operate as freely as the golf needed to. At the same time, you have to have a conservation restriction that EEA is actually going to record. If it's just, it doesn't have any of these types of considerations in them, it's likely that when you send it to them, they're going to send it back. A management plan is just saying, this is the plan, once a year, this is what we're planning to do. Simple things like, well, it's not that simple, but chemicals that are used and storage. Chemicals are changed over time. Some aren't as good as what we think they are now, and better ones are out there. Those sort of discussions might come up. It's not about, you know, on Thurs, like you were saying, Ben, you know, Thursday, we want to do this, we have to check with it. But if it's not in the management plan and you want to do it, then yeah, you need to touch base. And it's what any, what we would expect of the trustees if they were doing something we didn't know about. You don't want to go out there and see that there's fences up for livestock and nobody knew about it. The other thing is, that makes a point about what I was getting to about having the committee enforce moving on. Once you have a management company, it would be really good if we, the committee, could have their specific input and review on what is in the CR, if they had something that they wanted different. Instead of, instead of finding out, you know, and that was one of the things we did work, Andre was really helpful in giving us a lot of, and he's quite knowledgeable, what they might want to be doing there that we didn't restrict it. And that was when I said we had many, I want to call it tedious, but really detailed discussions where we weren't all on the same page at first. And that was some of the reason for so many changes to the draft, is we had these conversations, like, well, let's fix that. Let's change that. I think you will want the management company, when you sign a contract, to look at this and see what's different. And if they want changes, you know, come, that's why our committee would be good. You know, what, why is it not allowed now, and what difference would it make for the other interests of the CR? Because golf is not the only one, as far as this being in perpetuity. Whatever you allow now, you're allowing forever on the property. So, I don't think it's as restrictive as it reads. And actually, can Andre say something?
Just use the microphone. Andre Forten? Yes. Regarding the operations of the golf course, we, since I'm, I have the most experience as playing golf there for many years, I'm aware on a daily basis what the management company goes through in terms of maintenance and regular work. We have irrigation currently for the, for the tees and for the greens, and for the areas around the, around the greens. So we made sure that in the CR, there's, the wording does not restrict the management company from doing the regular maintenance and irrigation requirements that they normally do on a routine basis. The only time that the holder of the CR would get involved in a management situation would be in a, is if we planned a major irrigation change. For example, putting irrigation down the third fairway or the fourth fairway, requiring the ground to be broken, pipes to be laid out, the ground to be replaced, essentially the way it was before. Only for that kind of major work would the involvement of the, of the, of the Sudbury Valley trustees as the holder would, would, would get involved. So, but then the daily routine maintenance work, things need to be done, repaired, or anything like that. The current wording would allow the management company to do so unrestricted.
So, and I guess that's, just using that example, you know, my initial read was, we have to go to Sudbury Valley trustees as the proposed person, you know, for their review and approval of doing an irrigation system down the third fairway or the fourth fairway. And I would think that the town should be able to make that decision, and, you know, advise them that this is what we're doing, but not have to get, you know, go to them for the final approval of it.
Yeah. Well, my, based on the conversations we had with the SVT representative that came to our meetings, there wasn't really any reluctance on their part to entertain the idea of, of doing irrigation on, on fairways, requiring, you know, for them certainly to be notified. But if you have a land under a conservation restriction, if you're going to break that land apart and install pipes underneath, and you're going to have to, you know, feed the water supply, it's going to have to, they're going to have to be notified of that. They're going to have to be aware of what it is that we're trying to do. Because if, if they're not, then who knows? We can't have unrestricted plans going into place without them having a say about it, since they're a holder of the CR.
So, and Brian, the point is, they don't have, SVT can't say, the way this is written, no, you can't have irrigation there. But they may want to say, maybe you could do it this way, it's better environmentally. Or maybe you don't need to go as far outside of the envelope, I mean, outside of the area that we're putting the pipes in for the irrigation. It's not a matter of you can't do this, or you have to do it exactly our way. It's more just a notification and review, to make sure it's done in the best way possible.
There was never any indication that they said, they would, they would be in a position to say, oh, you want irrigation, well, I'm sorry, we're not in agreement with that. They're fully aware that the operation of a golf course does require irrigation, and that that's the town's wishes to put irrigation to improve the course play, then it's just a matter of laying out the plan. And, and I don't foresee any issues with, with that whatsoever.
And then, it's, it's not even that SVT, because, you know, the management there could change. It's not they didn't have any indication of it. The, the way the restriction is written doesn't give them that type of authority to say, no, you can't have this, or you can't have that. It's, and also, anyone is, I was just going to step in for a second. Anyone as a coholder is going to have that same obligation. It's what's in the CR determines whether they're the holder or coholder. They're still going to be looking at what you're doing. And having a management plan actually helps eliminate a problem down the road when they, if somebody found out something was going on, and it's like not, you know, is it or isn't it an allowable use? And then you have to, you know, start looking into the CR. Easier if you just have the plan and say, this is what we're doing, we're all in agreement, and it's, you know, it's good to go, once a year. Sorry, Andre, did you want to?
Well, I just wanted to mention also, it's not just irrigation, but all the other issues that come up in the regular maintenance and operation of the golf course. There's a number of issues, that number of tasks that they deal with on a daily basis, and none of that would be subject to constant approval by the holder of the CR in order to do them. I think that was the main reason we spent a lot of time writing into the document, giving enough flexibility for the town to operate the golf course in a, in a productive, non-restricted fashion. And only for the major projects. And I'm thinking irrigation, that's a major project. Relocating the ninth green will be a major project. Relocating the first tee will be a major project. And those aren't things that the management company will all of a sudden do on their own, oh, let's, let's do that this month. But it's something that conceivably, we'll know in advance, let's say, January of 2019, we'll know, okay, the new ninth green is going in, the new first tee is going in. In 2020, we're going to put some irrigation, major irrigation down, and that's basically part of the management plan, and that's it. But the regular operation of the golf course following that, there's nothing in the conservation restriction that puts a, an overly restrictive, I would say, requirement on the part of the management company to, to, to request permission by, from the, from the holder of the CR. I think we were pretty careful in, in writing the document in, in, in a way that would require only the permission of the, of the holder in cases of major issues, which really shouldn't be a concern for daily operations of the golf course. It shouldn't be restrictive, overly restrictive.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shea. So, you know, I still am, and I'm looking forward to hearing from council to come up next and let us know their thoughts, but having someone from the town at least coholding, I mean, issues are going to come up over the years. And, you know, I'd be curious to see what council says as to the propriety of having at least a coholder be an entity in our own town. Who, how did SVT come into this? Did, did they come to us? Did they hear we were doing this and came to us? Did someone on the committee have a relationship with them that knows them and called them and said, do you want to be the holder of this? How did that, how did they come into play? And were they, and as a follow-up to that, was SVT one of ten different entities? Or were they the one that someone knew? How'd, how'd they come into play?
Okay. So, as I stated before, before this came, before town meeting, there was a plan for the public safety building on the property. And then there was a group of people who wanted to see the whole property preserved. But if you're going to preserve it, it's a golf course, and you need a conserv- One of the first things, let me step back even before that, one of the, when this first came up, the CPC was contacted to use CPA money to purchase, to contribute towards the purchase of the golf course. And at those conversations, you have to, if you use CPA money, you have to put a conservation restriction on the property. You have to. It's a law. So if you're going to do that, you need to make sure you have someone who'd be willing to hold the CR. So that was the first time I contacted, in my role of the Community Preservation Committee Chair, SVT. Then after that, that was off the table, and we were looking at, as a citizen's petition, which was article number four in the March town meeting, was to preserve the whole property. And to preserve the whole property, we were looking at having a conservation restriction on that. And the Open Space Preservation Commission took ownership of that amendment that was passed at town meeting, and at that point, we knew if you needed a holder of the CR, who would be the best suited. We asked SVT at that time. So I've been in communication with them since the first time the Community Preservation Committee was asked. Why SVT? Because that's what they do. They're the best. They're professional. They hold CRs in Southborough. They've worked with the town on. They were integral in getting the conservation restriction purchased for Chestnut Hill Farms. They actually provided the information for the PowerPoint that the selectmen gave at town meeting. They helped fundraise over $700,000 in private funds for that purchase with the town and with the Southborough Open Land Foundation. So yes, I've talked with people at the trustees of reservations. They don't typically do this. They're not interested in this type of project. We actually reached out to them when some property on Chestnut Hill Road became available for sale. So during those conversations, I asked, is this something they would do? And Mass Audubon also. There's not any other entity besides the Southborough Open Land Foundation which is able legally to hold the CR, but has no experience, doesn't have one, and has indicated that they defer or prefer that SVT be the holder. So you're, for who's going to hold the CR in Southborough, it's pretty much SVT. It's, it's not a, it's like they're the only store in town. And they're experts, and the best.
Okay. All right. Before we ask council to come up, I too want to thank- All right, before we ask council to come up, I too want to thank the committee, it was a lot of work, wasn't it? In a short amount of time. So, very much appreciative, it sounds like a very collaborative effort and something that I think we're all, as a town, going to benefit from. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, council, if you'd come up and, thank you. And, you know, I know that, I believe you just received this version of it fairly recently. I mean, we're not in a position to, you know, I don't believe you're going to be asking us to vote on this, what, this is still work that has to be done. We may give you some guidance. It sounds like there's one particular issue that is a disagreement, but there may be others.
It definitely continues to be a work in progress. And let me address, first of all, plan status, because I've heard a lot of commentary about the plans. As we were preparing to acquire the St. Mark's property, I determined, in conjunction with a co-council that was assisting me for title insurance purposes, that we needed a full perimeter survey of the property to determine accurately how much land the town was getting and to properly define it, to determine if there were any encroachments or the need for easements and other issues. And we had it done to the ALTA or the American Land Title Standard, which is the highest standard of certification we could have gotten. The good news at the time was that the property came up, we were expecting 60 acres, it came up 59.922. So, that was pretty accurate using a, over a 100-year-old historic walking description to Reverend Corley's house and to an oak tree that was up near on the end of Latosquama. But in any event, that was the principal plan that assisted us to go forward and to acquire the St. Mark's property in late December. It was always known that that base plan, which is here tonight, because we did furnish it to the committee, was going to be the basis for additional detail and work. And part of that was the division off or the cutout of the public safety parcel, which cannot exceed six acres. That would be done by an A&R plan. Reference has been made that that's a subdivision. It is not a subdivision. An A&R plan says approval not required under subdivision control. The reason is quite simple. It's a lot that is fronting on a public way, in this case, Corderville Road. A subdivision would be if you created a new road, lots on that road and required to be in compliance with subdivision control. So, the very next step expected was to have this cutout plan or this division, this A&R lot division, which would then be subsequently recorded off the base plan that we had for the conveyancing purposes. I spoke to the land surveyor that we've been utilizing for the last several months at Feldman Surveying, which was a company given to me because they're working in conjunction with the architects for the layout of the public safety facility. And he said, once the architects can set the design of the lot, which is currently pending, I believe, according to what I heard before the Concom and the Planning Board, then based upon the ALTA survey data that he was able to obtain months ago and lines being able to be drawn, we will have then A&R, which has to be reviewed and endorsed by the Planning Board, rather quickly. So, that would be the very next step. And that gives us a conveyancing plan that can, we can record. From that plan, you've heard commentary about additional data being needed. And that's true. There may be additional information that has to be superimposed on that base plan, that survey plan. And I will tell you that I learned long ago in Worcester that they don't like sketch plans at the Worcester Registry of Deeds. They want to see this type of detail. And knowing the need and the necessity of this particular lot and the golf course, you know, needing it to be accurate, that's what we did. So, that basically is the beginning. But the plan that we furnished to the ad hoc committee was informational and a courtesy just so that they could see the perimeters of the property that we were acquiring. That, again, was instrumental in affecting the acquisition of the property. So, I just wanted to explain that one point. I guess there's still discussion about the holders and it's really obviously up to the Board of Selectmen, who is going to be either a holder or a coholder. And I've seen commentary about a principal coholder and SOLF being a junior. I never use the word junior with SOLF. I never use that word. As council, what my intent was, was right after town meeting, I made contact with the EEA. And I communicated with them about the concept of coholding, of a conservation commission coholding with a land trust or land foundation. The comment I got back was, that is acceptable. That is permissible and it defeats this conveyancing issue, which is called the merger issue. And merger, quite frankly, I've said this before, but merger simply means that if you hold the land, the fee of the land, and you hold a lesser interest in the land, very much similar to the fact that when we acquired the land of the golf course, we had an easement from St. Mark's relative to the septic system for Woodward. After we acquired that lesser interest, the easement merged with the fee and it became one ownership of one parcel. So, to defeat the concept of merger, you can't have an entity of the municipal corporation alone hold a lesser interest. And they recognize that in EEA and they recognize the fact that a conservation commission can be the coholder. So, you're out there trying to find a qualified land foundation. My impression as council was that the most qualified would be our home-based land foundation, which I later found out did not have the capability, they have the legal authority, as has been mentioned, but they just did not have the ministerial capability or the resources to do it. That was a disappointment to me, but it was well-intended that two Southborough entities hold that conservation restriction over one of the most precious portions of open space for the town of Southborough. So, that was the whole initial reason why I, when I created the first draft of the conservation restriction back in June, that I suggested that it would be a co-held circumstance. And then, as special counsel came in, we discussed it and he pointed out a very good point, which was that under Massachusetts law, Chapter Forty, Section Eight C, it is conservation commissions that can hold interests in real estate for conservation purposes. So, looking at the history of that statute, it was created in 1957. That was the first and principal power given to a conservation commission. It wasn't until 10 years later that conservation commissions in Massachusetts got wetland protection authority. So, again, I was viewing this as I'm looking at the principal authorization for a local conservation commission to hold this under state statute. And the belief was also that our Concom, in one form or another, will be here forever unless the town folds. And it hasn't since 1727, so I presume that we have at least a good history. But land foundations and land trusts, whether they're 50, 60, 100 years, they could fail or they could vanish. And there's no backup grantee in the current draft of the CR. And I looked at that today up against the original Newton Conservation Restriction, which was the golf course restriction that EEA said to all of us, if you want to get a little guidance, look at that one, even though it's dated. We did. And I noticed that we don't, if you give it to a sole grantee or a sole holder of the conservation restriction, we, there's no, there's no plan for a backup. I want to point out a couple of other quick points to you, because this is, again, all the research I did for the town. And several years ago, I was able to get the Conservation Restriction Checklist from EEA as it related to a different town with some different issues. But I looked at that again and I noticed with great interest that they reference conservation restrictions being co-held and conservation restrictions being co-held by a Concom. And if it is a conservation commission, then the need for certification that the CR is in the public interest is not needed if the Concom is the grantee. This is their internal analysis when we put these things before them and I've done them in other towns. And looking at that, again, I came to the conclusion that this has got to be a proper legal recommendation that there be a cohold. And if there is a disagreement, the analysis says, if the conservation restriction is co-held, yes, you do need a decision maker if there is some disagreement. So, you need to have some kind of a device in it, if it's going to be co-held, where the two parties, which should be equal. I'm not suggesting that the Southborough Concom should be on a higher level than the land foundation. Nobody's junior. Nobody's principal. I used the word originally principal because it was our conservation commission. But language can be put in there, which basically says, if there is a disagreement in how they're going to do this, then it get resolved and get resolved in almost like a mediation format to absolutely ensure that we not get into an issue of litigation. There should be absolutely no need for litigation between a qualified land foundation and our highly respected conservation commission. And some have said, well, you know, the selectmen appoint, yeah, the selectmen appoint, but the selectmen, and you all know this, you know, a building commissioner has, responsibility is to enforce the building code. Respectfully, you can't tell the building commissioner how to enforce the building code. You can have issues maybe with the conservation commission, but you can relate those issues if they cohold a restriction, but you don't control them. They are a separate legal entity under state statute with the authority to hold these types of interests. So, if there is a mutual respect in this government and if there's a mutual trust in this government amongst everybody with the common purpose of protecting that property in the best interest of this town, then there should be no issues. There should be no litigation. There should be a way to work out everything. That is really the summary of the background in conjunction with the state statute as to why I proposed the coholding. If you have any questions about that, or if you have any other questions for Luke and I, we'd be glad to answer them.
And so, Luke, your opinion as well? I mean, your learned legal opinion, you've done this for a few years. So, you know, who, you know, who should be the holders, the coholders? And if there wasn't that issue that Aldo talked about, who should have that, the overriding vote?
Sure. So, as I've said to the committee many times, you know, my position on this really is that I'm agnostic as to who the holder or coholders would and should be. I think there are good arguments to be made in both directions. I think Attorney Cipriano just did a really nice job of explaining to you the virtues of having coholders with the Southborough Conservation Commission as one of those coholders. That is not an alien concept. There was a question asked earlier, essentially, does this ever happen? Are conservation commissions ever coholders? And the answer is yes. As Attorney Cipriano said, he asked EEA directly, was told that's not a problem at all. When he sort of first came to our firm with the draft CR, which had coholders and the Concom as one, we weren't, we didn't blink. It's not something that's completely out of the ordinary or unheard of at all. With that said, on the other hand, there certainly are arguments in favor of a single holder. It's simpler, is I think, one obvious and easy answer to why that might be preferable. You have one grantee, one holder, the buck essentially stops with them. They're in charge of enforcing and implementing the terms and conditions of the CR. That's probably, frankly, the biggest reason why. If you do have coholders, not only do you have to make clear in the CR document itself sort of how the, what the mechanism for decision-making or tie-breaking would be, but you will have to have a side memorandum of understanding or a memorandum of agreement, some sort of essentially side contract between the two holders detailing that a little more specifically and covering some other details as well. So, there are, you know, things like that that are going to add a little additional work for the lawyers and add a little bit of an extra layer of complexity. But again, that's not a reason not to do it if the selectmen determine that ultimately you would prefer to have the town Concom as one of the coholders to maintain some level of control. I think that's perfectly appropriate and fine and we can draft this in a way that will reflect that. And as a matter of fact, that is how almost all of the drafts were initially drafted. Really, it was right up until the end when the committee actually voted to go to the single holder, that we changed it to just SVT, so.
So, in your legal opinion, is it better to have the conservation commission as a coholder for us as a town? It's not foreign, it's not a foreign concept in your experience, is what I'm.
No, it's, that's absolutely true. And it's a little hard to me, for me to say, I, I'm not familiar enough with the inner workings of the town to say for sure that, yes, this is the better option for you. I defer to Attorney Cipriano on that. I certainly respect and understand his opinion on this. And so, I think what you're hearing from his, is that, from him, is that in his opinion, that is the preferable route to go. Clearly, what you're hearing from the committee is that from their perspective and from the folks that they heard from here in town, there's a preference to go with a single holder, Sudbury Valley Trustees. And so, ultimately, I think it's for the board to really weigh those two perspectives and decide what's the better fit for the town. I'm not trying to duck or dodge the question.
That's fine. Just interested in your opinion. No, that's fine. And so, council, your opinion remains then, conservation commission should minimally be a coholder? And the other coholder in your learned opinion should be?
Well, at this point, if, again, it was a disappointment. I thought that SOLF could do it, but SOLF can't. So, I would have no objection or I would recommend that the coholder be SVT and we work out some additional language within the conservation restriction. And keep it, to address that, keep in mind that if you, if you had SVT as the single holder, the next task of councils are, we're going to negotiate this with their lawyers. And I've done that in the past on certain points. But that is also going to take some work to ensure that what we're proposing is acceptable. And if we want, if you make that decision of a single coholder, then we have to go back and refocus on the legal format of that conservation restriction. And at least I'm going to have to do it to ensure to the very best degree I can that this town is protected completely in the future in terms of its ability to regulate that course in conjunction with the coholder or the holder.
I would, I would just add to that, that we, SVT and their attorneys will surely still be involved, assuming they were the coholder with the conservation commission, if that's the route that the selectmen decides to go. Certainly, SVT will still be heavily involved in the process. Will need to be discussing this draft document with them and their attorneys. You've heard allusions to the fact that EEA is going to have to be involved. They're going to want to review this carefully and they may have some changes as well. There was also a suggestion made earlier, which I agree with entirely, which is that the management company, the company that ultimately is going to be charged with managing the course, I think really should have a look at this document just to make sure that there's nothing in here that is going to be so restrictive that it will really preclude them from being able to do what they need to do to operate the course. They might have some really good ideas and suggestions that none of us thought of. I like to golf, but I'm a lawyer. I don't really know exactly what goes into managing a golf course. So, we did the best we could. I think we did a really nice job of looking at this from a number of different angles and covering all the different aspects of it that we could think of. But my point here is to simply say that this is very much a work in progress and there are still a number of interested parties who are going to have to take a look at this and are surely going to have some input into this document as well before it's anywhere near ready to go file.
All right. Thank you, council.
And one other point I should make is, no one's, well, maybe somebody will raise this eventually, but I'll address it before that. And it is that certain deed restrictions were required by St. Mark's as they related to the original land exchange agreement and it found its way into the deed. But we made sure that they were consistent with what we all expected. And those deed restrictions simply indicate that the property may only be used for municipal purposes, the town cannot sell to a third party, but can license or permit a third party to manage the golf course facility for the town. So, it's consistent with what your board and the officials of the town are doing. And secondly, at least 50% of the landmass shall remain open space, which may include a golf course. And the last one was that the restrictions would run with the land and be in perpetuity to the extent permissible by law. But you have to keep in mind that these are technically private restrictions. They are not the type of statutory restriction that we're discussing here tonight. But nothing about those deed references in any way conflict with what the intent is of the town and they have been a part of the original agreement back to the inception.
Okay. Thank you, council. As has been my practice over the years, it would take a lot for me to go against the advice of council. I appreciate your opinion very much. I think it makes reasonable sense and good legal sense to have a cohold with the conservation commission and SVT. Commission and SVT, but I look forward to hearing from my other members. Ms. Faniff, do you want to start?
Hi. I share some of the same concerns that Mr. Shea. Sorry. I share some of the same concerns that Mr. Shea asked earlier about the maintenance of existing irrigation system or improvements. It appears to me that they need prior approval to do any changes to a plan on irrigation. So if something suddenly needs to be done down there, would it be required, would it be a requirement to get prior approval? Page 16.
Can I just say that it was written so that...
See, I have more than, you want to just take a microphone?
Oh, sorry.
I think we have three.
While Luke's looking for that, it was written so that annual maintenance plan, you foresee what's coming up in the next year, which you have a good idea of what's coming down the road. If there's any emergency repairs needed, that can be done. But if you're all of a sudden in the middle of the year saying, oh, we want to relocate this and, you know, do massive changes, that would need to be run by the holder of the CR. And not if it was, a pipe broke, we need to dig it up and fix it, and you just do that, and that's written in there, and maybe Luke can show you exactly where.
And that applies to any kind of utility lines as well, if it's not water?
Any repairs. I don't know that we have utility lines besides the water in there.
Has related water and utility lines? I know that means water, but is any future need for electrical undergrounding or any of that type of stuff?
If, so, if there's an electrical line that becomes inoperational, they can go in and fix it. If they're trying to put new electricity in, they need to go in front of the holder of the CR, whoever that may be, co-holders, holders. You know, there's no lighting. I don't know what electrical there is on the property. I forget right now, but.
I don't know.
It's a lot of detail. There's no lights allowed at night, so.
All right. I need clarification. I understand that the perimeter is identified as far as the use for the town, the public safety, the parking, and the golf course is going to be outlined on the plan. The golf course will be managed by a decision that's going to be made here this evening. What role does the town of Southborough have in that since we are the, since we negotiate the management contract with the management team of the golf course? Are we partying out to the golf course's behavior or actions?
Well, you are, because they're, in a sense, they're, I'm not even going to call them an agent, but they, we don't know if they're going to be a licensee, these are things we're going to discuss. But they basically are, they're managing that course for the town of Southborough, and the officials that are going to be directly involved in that process of management will be primarily the town administrator, and to an extent, as needed, the board of selectmen.
Okay. Thank you.
So Barney, the town gets to run and use the property in all the ways that are allowed within the CR?
I understand that, but I'm also.
And your management company can only do what's allowed in the CR?
I understand that, but my concern is that we are going to have to soon identify a management team for the parcel of land, the golf course, in that agreement, and put that in place. I do not want to sit here after a formal town meeting and hold that process up because we didn't think of something. And I don't know how to move this ahead and solve some of these issues so that we get it done. I understand there's a plan that's still, the plan has, I'm sorry for my voice, folks, the plan hasn't been approved by the planning board or Conservation?
Correct. It's, the design is pending, and the planning board eventually is going to have to endorse, approval not required, the cutout or division of the public safety portion that cannot exceed six acres.
Okay. Thank you, Freddie.
One other point I was going to make about, and I think I understand, and I'm sorry if I use the word subdivision when I was talking about the A and R. The A and R is cutting off one lot from the bigger lot, in layman's terms. Is that correct, Aldo?
It's, it is dividing a lot out that's not subject to the subdivision control.
Will it have its own deed, separate?
We're not deeding it out. We're just cutting the parcel out. It remains the property of the town of Southborough.
Okay. So it's not two separate deeds on two separate lots?
No, it's two separate lots on the one parcel.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions for counsel? Ms. Faniff, any further?
I'm on set.
Okay.
Attorney Legere, did I say that right?
Good enough, yes.
I'm Bracio, and everybody says Bracio.
Legere.
Yes.
Legere. I know I've asked you before about your experience as far as golf courses.
Yes.
And I know towns holding golf courses isn't necessarily a common thing across the Commonwealth. But of any that you know, I mean, off the top of your head, do you have any idea if they would have, what's the common thread between any that you may know of? Is it a co-holder or is it a sole holder of the CR?
So I did some research, or had an associate do some research into CRs on golf courses. And it's not unprecedented, I think I told you this the last time, but the only example we really came up with of an actual true conservation restriction on an operational golf course was the Newton example, which you're all very much aware of. As Freddie mentioned earlier, during the process, we learned that the town of Maynard is apparently in the process of doing the same thing, but my understanding is they're still very early in that process as well, so there's really nothing to look at there. So the only, the only example that I can point to is the Newton example. That's the only one we're aware of.
Right. And that's from the 1980, I think it was.
It's older.
Yeah. It's back there. I have questions for Concom, but I'll hold them while we're doing the attorney's questions.
Yeah, thank you. The, the issues that are relating to the running of the golf course that need permission from the grantee, do you think all of those things are necessary for EEA approval?
Some of them may well be, so.
Like the machinery, the type of carts, the, whatever, putting in the irrigate? Like, we just can't say anything that's needed to run the golf course is okay?
Right. You have to be a little more specific than that. You know, that I'm confident of. Again, where this is really uncharted waters, it's hard to say with certainty how far they would let us go down that path. But in drafting this and working with the committee, we tried to strike a balance between allowing uses essentially as of right that would be necessary for just daily operation and maintenance of the golf course and a little bit beyond that. And we sort of tried to just guess where the line would be that EEA would probably get uncomfortable. And in my experience, when you start talking about things like machinery.
Yeah.
You're going to get their attention in a negative way. And so that was the idea here. We could certainly, as the process unfolds, if, again, if we bring the management company into the conversation and they say, whoa, 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 we really need to be able to use small, light machinery like a Bobcat for X, Y, and Z purposes, and we'd only need to do it in these particulars. I mean, maybe we can revisit this and address some of those more specific or particular aspects of it, but, but yes, I think you're basically right that in drafting this, we tried to strike that balance between allowing whoever's managing the course the freedom to do what they need to do every day to have this be an operational and functional golf course and not go so far that EEA would, you know, look sideways at what we were, what we were doing.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And Attorney Cipriano, the, I was on board with your original recommendation or understood it better, I guess, when it was the Conservation Commission co-holding with SOLF. But I guess I don't totally get the benefit of having a co-holder being the Conservation Commission when the other party is the potential one that's going to be the individual holder anyway. So can you just explain what that benefit would be again? If SVT is going to be the individual potentially, why would it be better for us to be a co-holder with them?
I believe that a land foundation or a land trust's authority comes from the four corners of the conservation restriction, a legal instrument. The authority and power and duties of a conservation commission are initially founded in state statute, Chapter 40, Section 8C. So they, in my mind, are more relevant to not only the co-hold, but to the ultimate enforcement, notwithstanding the fact that a land foundation co-holder might be able to get enforcement. But as a municipal council for many years, there is nothing better than being able to advance in a court of the Commonwealth the position of your conservation commission relative to the protection of resources of the town. So that, that is why I believe that there was a good purpose on a highly respected and reputable conservation commission that has been enforcing for years, and it's actually the first agency I represented 17 years ago when I came back. And in all their enforcement actions, they have been absolutely precise on their responsibilities.
Thank you.
Mr. Shea?
Question on page 23 of this, towards the bottom of that page, it's paragraph F, Permanent Abandonment of St. Mark's Golf Course. It reads, "The premises shall permanently cease to be used as a golf course should grant or fail to operate and maintain St. Mark's Golf Course in substantially the same condition as established in the baseline documentation report for a period of four consecutive years." So is that something that was, that, you know, legally has to be in there? And I guess, one of the things that I remember people talking about is, you know, they didn't want this, if it wasn't going to be a golf course, they didn't want it to turn into a hayfield, you know, an unmaintained, you know, eyesore. So, you know, A, why would we wait four years before we declared it permanently gone? But conversely, again, as has been stated earlier, this is in perpetuity. So, you know, if for some reason, you know, say 10 years from now, golf loses popularity and we can't get a management company to come in, yet 50 years from now, golf regains in popularity and somebody wants to make a go of it, why would we give up our ability to go back to having it be a golf course?
Yeah, very good question. To answer the first piece of that, is this something that's legally required? No, I don't necessarily believe it is. It's something that we felt made sense in the context of this document where there is, there are sort of several contemplated uses here. We have the golf course for as long as possible. We have uses other than golf, passive recreational uses when it's not in use as a golf course, so this time of year, for instance, going out there, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, sledding, all those, those good things. But there's also reference to use in perpetuity should the golf course permanently cease. And that was, I think, part of what was contemplated by town meeting initially as well. If the golf course is no more, we still want that to be open space and have passive recreational uses allowed. And so where throughout the document, we're discussing temporary or permit abandonment, we all felt it made sense to identify exactly what that meant and to really put a number on it and specify. If that's something that the town is just very uncomfortable with, or if, as you suggest, you don't want to give up that right because maybe down the line, golf could be revived there, then we could certainly revisit this and reconsider that provision, and we, you know, it might require us to tweak a couple other parts of it, but, you know, that's, again, this is a work in progress. So what this reflects is the good, hard work of the committee, all the good ideas they had with input from the public, from SVT, with my input, and, you know, again, it made sense to all of us that you'd have something in there to define what permit abandonment meant. But perhaps that's something that this board would like to reconsider, and certainly you have the power and authority to do that.
Okay. Last question for me. Section 6, the extinguishment. Could you explain in English what that whole section means?
So as I said before, really, this comes right out of the EEA model conservation restriction. And essentially, what it's intended to do, as Freddie alluded to earlier, is set up a framework if, at some point down the line, something were to happen to this property, which would essentially render it useless for the conservation purposes we've identified herein. This essentially sets up a framework for extinguishing the conservation restriction and putting the property to some other use. What that might be, I'm hard pressed to come up with an example of.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't know of any examples of that ever actually happening, but it's, yeah, I think it's really just their kind of legalese to establish, you know, a process should that ever come to pass.
And there's language in here that goes on to say that the grantee, that should this happen, that the grantee has a fair market value in, in the property? And I guess that's what, you're going to rub me the wrong way. I don't, I guess if you could just expand a little bit on that.
That's a, that's a convincing question, but the answer is yeah. What usually, and this is standard language that I've seen in other conservation restrictions, but there is a value to any interest in real estate. So if this is extinguished, what the holder is going to be saying is, then we want some kind of compensation for the extinguishment of that as to its value. The likelihood of this happening is, is not practicable. It's necessary, it's a failsafe, but who's going to be watching us is St. Mark's with their so-called 100-year restriction, which they believe they will have, to ensure that they sent this to us for at least 50% being used for a golf course. But again, that's, that's what it does. It divides the interests, so if it is liquidated, then the value of the interest is shared between the holders of the interest in real estate. I've never seen, I've never seen that actually where.
Proportionate to the purchase?
I'm sorry?
Proportionate to the amount that each put in for purchase of the property.
Well, proportionate to the value at the time of extinguishment.
Yeah.
Not, not, not in $20, $18, no.
All right. Thank you. And so counsel, with all of that, what do you need from us tonight? I know there's still work to be done on this, you're still doing some crafting.
Well, to carry forward, something that you don't, are not going to be responsible for, but we are going to be looking very carefully to get a further revised plan that further defines the breakout of the public safety facility, which is in the hands of two of the regulatory boards. The land surveyor is ready to assist in that, and I really want that as soon as I can get it. But they've been very cooperative up through all of the needs we had to get that instrument survey, which was a task based upon the fact that it was a 60-acre parcel. But quite frankly, Luke and I really can't substantively continue on until we know who you want the holders to be of the CR. Because if it goes in one direction or the other, we then know what, what changes we're going to have to be addressing.
Okay. Again, as I've stated, I'll, it'll, I'll be hard pressed to go against your advice. It has to be something pretty demonstrable for me to go against, your recommendation. I continue to believe it should be co-held by the Conservation Commission and SVT, and would like to hear from the other members as to where they, Mr. Shea, let's go down this way. What are your, what are your thoughts for counsel?
You know, I went into this, you know, not knowing what the best answer would be on it. And, you know, certainly appears that SOLF is out as a potential holder and/or co-holder. You know, based on the way the discussion has played out, I would tend to lean towards the co-holding with the Conservation Commission and SVT at this point.
Mr. Schiffern?
Yeah, I, I agree with the idea of co-holding also. I think we get the protection and enforcement from SVT anyway, whether they are individual or. or coholding. And we also get the benefits of having our own conservation commission, so I would support that as well.
Ms. Brockio.
I guess, would this be a good time to ask Conservation Commission the questions I may have for them? Obviously, I'm curious as to the Conservation Commission's thoughts on even potentially holding this. I mean, we're talking tonight about putting it in their hands potentially, and we don't know where they stand. I know I was at a meeting and there was discussion on it two meetings ago. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. So Ben, as the Conservation Commission representative, can you give us any input on your feeling? I know, obviously, you voted unanimously for SVT. So could you explain two things? Could you maybe give us some direction on where CONCOM's at? I know you can't technically speak to them, I don't believe they voted on this, but can you explain to me why you feel SVT, as the representative for CONCOM, SVT is the way to go?
Sure. So I can't speak for the entirety of the commission, as you say, we haven't voted on it. We discussed it, and I think I can accurately say that opinions felt at that meeting to be mixed, I think would be an accurate description. The reasons that I feel personally that having a single coholder is the best approach, I think, are summarized pretty well in the report that we submitted to you tonight. I guess I would emphasize a little bit more, the, I was initially concerned over the possibility of, I thought there might even be a legal conflict of interest, but I've now been assured by both town council and special council that there is no legal conflict of interest with the conservation being a coholder. I think there is a, I'm concerned about sort of a practical conflict where it's sort of easy for me to envision a situation where, you know, the golf course management company or the public safety facility somehow, something happens that is a violation of the CR or easily be at the same time, requires an enforcement action by the Conservation Commission. And at the same time, you know, we are part of town government and we want the town to be able to successfully operate a golf course. And I think that it puts us in, it puts us in a conflicting position. And I understand and appreciate what's been said, some very complimentary things have been said about conservation this evening, and I thank you for those comments. We appreciate that. I think we do work together well as a commission and as part of town government. I'm also concerned about, you know, I can sort of picture these conflicts coming up, and I don't want to put a commission twenty years in the future, fifty years in the future, you know, that's part of a government completely staffed by different individuals in a position where they're going to have to deal with that. As a commissioner, I wouldn't want to be in that position, and that sort of informed my opinion on the matter. So that's why I think it's a cleaner arrangement to have SVT as a coholder.
Okay. Also, and I don't know, Beth, you may be able to answer this question for me as well. I've seen the agendas for CONCOM, and I know how busy, very busy conservation is with everything that's on your plate now. And that's not even speaking specifically to you and the roles that you have. And I know there are times you are extremely overwhelmed with the duties that you are given. So obviously, that's a concern for me. It would be, obviously, whether it's an endowment or staffing or something would have to be done if conservation co-held to help offset that. And then, on the other hand, I look at, from the fiscal side, being the bean counter, that obviously, if it's another person, there's benefits and there's a lot of things involved in that, in potentially hiring somebody else to help you to manage this, where SVT potentially is saying thirty-seven thousand dollars again, I haven't seen the documents, I don't know. But just using that number as a whole, it's a one-time endowment, and for this, for the town, for CONCOM, money-wise, dollar-wise, going forward, what would be the effect of that, say, over even a hundred years? I mean, I don't know. I think it's very hard to predict what the additional workload will be. I think, as was previously mentioned, the roles of each coholder is going to have to be very, very carefully defined. And whether SVT takes the primary role and we take the secondary role, then that may change, that will change the dynamics. So it's, until that issue is worked out, I can't say the additional extent of the workload. There will be some, obviously. I would probably be tasked with doing the annual monitoring, or at least my department would be tasked with doing annual monitoring, along with the coholder of SVT. And we would probably, as we do currently, do all the reserved rights review. So whenever a change or something that's identified as a reserve right is actually utilized, for example, let's say the golf committee is going to be expanding the irrigation, we would have to go and do a review of the conservation restriction to ensure that it falls within the four corners. So there's time, you know, required in that review. But beyond that, until our roles are defined, it would be hard to say how much additional time I'd need to spend. Okay, just a couple other quick things while you're there. Does conservation currently cohold or hold any properties here in town now? We hold the conservation restriction on Chestnut Hill Farm, and that is it. We do that solely. Okay. With the assistance of Sudbury Valley trustees, who we hire- Okay. -to do the annual monitoring. Okay, which, that's important. So, but we do not, the town does not own that property. Correct. There's a distinction, because in this case, the town is going to own the property and also going to watch over the property. And I think there's a perception of a potential conflict of interest, and I think that's what Ben was trying to allude to. Yep. And I think that's why the committee, one of the reasons why the committee was very purposeful in identifying a sole holder rather than a coholder. Because it could potentially put the Conservation Commission in a precarious situation if we do have to enforce against the town. And town council would have to represent both interests, and I think that may be a challenge. I think there's concern about that.
At least, I think council may have a comment on that.
Absolutely.
First off, the Conservation Commission, back to nineteen eighty, holds the fee in what we call the Davis parcel, which is on Breakneck Hill Road. They don't have an interest in the property. They, on behalf of the town of Southborough, hold the land itself. And that was our initial attempt back in the nineteen eighties to start protecting land in town. So they have the experience not only holding the fee for restrictive purposes under conservation, but a lesser included interest also. There would be no conflict, respectfully, with the public safety facility, because the public safety facility is not part of the CR. It's outside the envelope, as was always intended by the town meeting and by the town in general. So there is definitely going to be, and I don't speak to this, this is not my responsibility, but there's definitely going to be some additional responsibilities on the CONCOM. And they graciously, when I went before them several weeks ago, allowed me to suggest that they not act until the Board of Selectmen had an opportunity to make a decision. And they agreed not to do that so that this didn't conflict or create a complication. So they are, I'm presuming, they're waiting to see what your decision is, and if there are needs of other things that they need to have, I don't know if it's an increased budget or whatever, I can see that, I can understand that. But that's part of the, we must have understood that when we went forward and advanced this whole concept for acquisition, that to protect it might cost a little more money.
Great. Can you just explain to me, I mean, obviously, I'm not a lawyer, what, holding the fee versus a CR, are they the same thing?
Well, as I said earlier, the fee, I keep mentioning the fee, the fee is the land. That's just a-
Well, there's technically no CR on the Davis property, or is there?
That's correct. The, well, there is a restriction on the, there is no conservation restriction. The Conservation Commission, under the same statute, forty, Section eight C, holds the land itself but for conservation purposes. That didn't have to go to the state. That was decided in the four corners of this town, and I think around nineteen eighty. I think Bonnie and I, Bonnie may remember that as much as I do, when it was actually, when it actually occurred, because it was a big deal for two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars to acquire that land from the Davises. But they hold the fee, the land, and it's restricted.
Okay. I, that's, that portion of it, I'm done, thank you.
Do you have a position for council?
I'm still, with all due respect to town council, I'm still not sold on coholders. I still have some of the concerns mentioned here tonight. It's not so much today, but it may be twenty years or fifty years down the road. Having the Conservation Commission, who, again, is a permitting board, I have concerns with the town policing the town. That's no slight against anybody, but that's, again, you don't know down the road, when there's different people sitting here at this table and there's different people sitting on other boards in town. So where this is in perpetuity, I'm more inclined for a sole holder. Thank you.
Ms. Faniff.
I do have some concerns with the needed support for conservation. I probably have been a critic at one of their meetings most recently, as far as overextending them and managing town properties. But in saying that, recognizing that also, we have to be prepared to fund whatever their needs might be to accomplish this. And I agree, I'm not sure who stated this, but I think the assumption of town meeting was to support the needs of doing what we're doing. So if conservation is going to require additional funding to do this, I think we should say that right up front, that we support that as well. So I'm inclined to coholding conservation in Sudbury Valley.
All right, thank you. So council, I think you've heard four members believe that it should be co-hold, as you're suggesting. One not-
One more question.
Yes.
Can you briefly talk to the idea of, like, the town policing itself, that that board could be put in a, in a bad position that they're concerned, like, that position that they're potentially concerned about, having to police themselves, whether or not that should be a concern of theirs when they address this?
Well, I thought about that in the last couple days, and I know that the Conservation Commission has probably had to deal with wetland issues as it relates to DPW land. I would presume that they would. And there's never been an issue there. I mean, in a sense, agencies are policing themselves, but this is a separate and distinct statutory authority. And if they make a determination that something's wrong, whether it's the DPW that does it or whomever, then this Conservation Commission with this membership is not going to delay in making the right decision. You've got to believe in your Conservation Commission, and I'm sure you do and I do. That's why I made the initial proposal. So it's not really policing ourselves, they are a separate entity. Nobody can really tell them what to do when it comes to statutory authority, unless they do something completely out of the ordinary, which is contrary to the public interest, that would never happen. So it's not really a situation of policing themselves. They, as an agency of the town, police other agencies in the town, I'm not going to say on a regular basis, but they do it, and they would do it without any qualms. Yeah, well.
Please. One final thought. In no way, what I've stated here tonight shows any negative reflect towards conservation, because I know the work that they do. All you need to do is attend one of their meetings. And it's in no way, by me suggesting SVT, am I putting a negative connotation on conservation, because they do an amazing job and I have absolute trust in them. It's just sometimes the process doesn't always work like we would like it to work. So, thank you.
All right. So we may have a couple of comments, council. You have what you need from this board, yes?
I believe we do tonight, yes.
I also know that we've been at this particular conversation just tonight for almost, for about two hours. If there are some comments, if we've had, there have been a number of open meetings that the committee has had, if there's something new that hasn't been brought up before, and we have some very brief, I'll take a couple of comments, but if it's saying the same, you know, I'll encourage you not to hopefully do that, because we have other agenda items to get to. And ma'am, please.
Yes, Kelly Hayes, fourteen, Lattice Quama Road. I came here tonight because I'm very interested in this question about coholding, single holder. Read the report, listened carefully to what was being said tonight. I am strongly in favor, after listening to all the reasons given, to the single holder. I believe that setting up this coholder business only creates red tape, complication, unnecessary work, and back and forth. I hear that it is legally possible. I also hear that it is not standard best practice, and I don't see why we would take on something cumbersome and complicated and red tape creating that is not best practice throughout the state, that most CRs are held by a single holder, that SVT, as a professionally-run nonprofit, holds seventy-five of these solely, and they do that very well and very effectively, and why we would burden our Conservation Commission with unnecessary work and red tape for something that can be effectively done by a professional nonprofit, I think is a big mistake. One of the arguments that I heard from the town council was that, oh, well, you know, if a nonprofit goes belly up, I mean, then we're just, we're sunk, right? Like, what happens if SVT goes out of business? And I think that is a pretty simple, easily remedied thing. You can do that in drafting an agreement where, just like this, I've forgotten the term now, but the extinction clause, that, you know, worst-case scenario, meteor hits the golf course, there's no more CR to be held. You write in that possibility, same thing. If SVT goes out of business, there is a process for that. All nonprofits are administered and accountable to the state attorney general. I work for a major nonprofit, the Museum of Fine Arts, Boston. If we go out of business, the art does not go out on the sidewalk to the curb, okay? And we regularly enter into agreements with donors who are making a gift, with the understanding that the gift is in perpetuity. But if something bizarre happens, and after now a hundred-and-forty-seven years of operation of the MFA, we cease to exist as a 501(c)(3), like, there's a process to roll that out and to resolve the issue. So I think that is simply a non-issue to worry about a sole holder not being around. You simply write in that, in that case, everyone makes reasonable efforts to transfer the restriction to another appropriate entity to hold it. That is not hard, and I really think that's not a valid reason for it. And I believe that SVT, as a competent, professional, well-run organization with years and years of experience doing this, will work in the best interests of the CR and the town, and I urge the selectmen to go with the sole holder. Thank you.
If there are any, if there are any other very brief comments that are completely different from that, if it's the exact same thing, then I'd ask you to please move on to the next person behind you.
No, no, I have a very brief comment.
All right, please, ma'am.
My brief comment is that, yes, my name is Kate Burke, fourteen, Birchwood Drive, Southborough. And I am disappointed, actually, that the Board of Selectmen were taking votes and opinions before you heard from a room full of townspeople that are really, really-
Thank you.
That do, that do want to be heard on this matter, on this vote. And frankly, I have one major comment, that the argument that town council attorney Cipriani has made regarding the reason that four of the Board of Selectmen have decided to vote against a five-member committee that you appointed that spent hundreds of hours articulating very clear and obvious reasons why SVT as sole holder would be the best choice for this town in perpetuity, not just when you're sitting in your seats as Board of Selectmen, but in sitting in perpetuity, in terms of what is going to happen fifty and one hundred years from now, that his argument was not cogent or well-articulated with examples, and instead are the hypotheticals. I heard the same argument each time. And to me, I listen very carefully every single time, and there is not a single person in the audience, nor if I were to ask each member of the board tonight, to exactly explain why this argument of the CC- to exactly explain why this argument of the CC four points land trust authority is the reason that we are going to capitulate our position on a CR to be co-held by the town that is the owner of the land that could change their mind in 50 years as to what would happen on that pristine, beautiful piece of land that all of us voted to keep and to save our heritage. And that is my simple comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
It's very short.
Very briefly, and we are gonna move on to other topics.
My name is Subast. I understand Concom, Board of Selectmen puts people on the Conservation Commission, is that correct? So you put people on the Conservation Commission, and I'm not worried about this board or that Conservation Commission. But in the future, if someone wanted to put people on the Conservation Commission so they could get rid of the, on the Conservation Commission so they could get rid of the CR, and then the, the Board of Selectmen and the, and the Conservation Commission could collude to get rid of the CR, and that isn't what we want to have happen.
I don't think that's, council, could you address that, please?
Luke can speak to that, but the CR, the CR, for the CR to go away, the state would have to sign off. And it's in the, and they're gonna look very, in a very scrutinizing, independent way to know why somebody's trying to amend or change or extinguish it. So they have to actually sign off in the CR. The selectmen sign off, but the final approval is from the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. And no local politics will affect their decision.
Okay. I still, I do, I still don't think the town should be, be policing itself. That's just not a good idea.
Last comment, if I may, and then there is public comment later on tonight. We're gonna get down to other matters. Sir.
My, Tom McCarthy, 13 Lattice Quama Road. My understanding of the purpose of the holder of the conservation restriction is someone that will defend that against usually the owner trying to do things on the property that are not allowed or encroach on the property. And to put the Conservation Commission as a coholder, if there was a situation where we, we did have to fight against you, the town, because you wanted to do something, you had all sorts of plans for that land, we heard them. You wanted to put recreational buildings out there, you wanted to put elderly, you know, the, the, the senior center, and you had, and, and other plans that might come down the road. So, so basically, there's a, there's a lack of trust, okay, among a lot of people about what your intentions are. And all you're gonna do with a coholder, with the, with the Conservation Commission, is let Aldo spend a lot of money on legal fees, again, for another draft document on how the coholders are gonna work together. And it introduces two bosses. If, if at some later date it has to be defended, the Conservation Commission has to go to you to get the legal funds to fight. So it makes absolutely no sense to have the Conservation Commission hold us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. With that, thank you, council. Ma'am, if you, is, we're gonna have public comment. We've been at this for over two hours. We had multiple, multiple public meetings, multiple public meetings. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to our next agenda item, which is the approval of management contract. Thank you, council. No, we didn't vote. No, we just gave them guidance. We don't have anything to vote on yet.
Can I ask before, just before you end?
Ma'am.
Freddie Gillespie, can I ask?
Oh, please.
With all respect, the committee, one of the things we asked of you tonight was to extend our term, which expires tonight. And if you don't do so now, then we'd have to come back and ask you to reappoint us. So, you know, I think, I think in all fairness to our committee and the work we've done, at least give us our marching orders or our, whatever.
So from, I'll start. From my perspective, the, we had a term for the committee. The committee did its work, it produced its final report. We extended that a couple extra weeks, which was no issue whatsoever. Well, yes, you were, you were gonna do the report two weeks ago and instead asked to come in today. I would not be looking to extend it, and we'll be looking to continue to work with council. There, if there are issues that they need addressed with, you know, they can always ask for advice, but.
Can I just make a point? We didn't ask to come in tonight. I asked to be on the agenda on the 19th. Mark Purple suggested that we come in tonight because we had met on the 18th. It didn't give our attorney time to turn around the last draft. When he asked me that, I said, yes, but we're well aware that our term expires on the first. So when I asked Mark, he said, let me check with you, Dan, and see if you wanted us to come in on the second. When you said yes, we said okay, and then we asked for our term to be expended, extended by one day. This was not something I came up with or the committee came up with. We asked to be fully done within our term, and then we were requested to come in. I did not make the initial request ever, and then only after we were asked to come in on the second did I ask to have our term extended for today. So this has been no, us trying to prolong our term.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Shea?
We're asking tonight, that's it.
Mr. Shea?
So I think it's a fair request to ask for the extension.
Shiffrin.
Can I just make a motion?
Well, if you'd like, sure.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we extend this committee to May 1st. Oh, June 30th.
All right, motion's been made. Is there a second? All right, discussion. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One. Okay. Other thoughts? Okay. Ms. Faniff, anything? Okay. All right, thank you. We will move on to our next agenda item, the approval of, I'm gonna go ahead and, we can do the approval of meeting minutes from November 21st first. I think that should be pretty quick. I would move that we approve the meetings minutes from November 21st. Are there thoughts, questions about those meeting minutes? No? Okay. Then motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Chairman's report. All right, so we'll move the town administrator to report. Mr. Purple?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items this evening. Wanted to, to let the board know, the, the transfer station, this cold weather is starting to affect us as well. There's, there's been an issue with the transfer station. The hopper isn't currently working. However, it's not, it's not as much weather-related as it is. There's a software issue. We've brought in open-top containers, so that those are being brought in by Harvey, so that people can throw their, throw their things away. At this point, Karen is hoping to have everything back up by the weekend, because if we get into the weekend with it, it's gonna be an issue if we're still using the open tops. I got an update from her this evening during the meeting. The software problem has been fixed, and hopefully the, the other half of the solution can be done in the next day or so. And that'll, that'll take care of that issue. The electric aggregation program is gonna be going into place in February. And as required, we're gonna be having two informational sessions, both of them on January 9th. First one is gonna be at the senior center at noon time, which is gonna be geared towards the seniors. We're gonna be providing them lunch and giving them an update and giving them an ability to ask questions about the program. The second session is gonna be here at 7 o'clock that same evening. Cable is going to be taping it, so people will go back and can look at this. If there are any board members who are available for either of those sessions, I think it'd be great to have at least a member or two of the board attending to, to show support for the program that you voted to, to move forward.
What's the date on that again?
It's January 9th, noon time at the senior center, 7 o'clock here at the townhouse. There's lunch with noon time. Don't let that sway you one way or the other, so. The, wanted to give the board an update on the, the technology committee. The, so Christine Johnson has been handling that piece. There were meeting postings that were done for interview and determination of a slate of candidates for January 4th and January 8th. The town clerk got a further look at it and in, and looking at the issue a little bit more closely, noted that the members of the selection committee that were appointed by the individual boards weren't sworn in within the 15-day period as required by the bylaw. This doesn't happen to us often, but when it does, it's, you know, usually a problem. So all the boards, the school committee, this board, and trustees will need to reappoint the people that they had, and then the meetings will be rescheduled. Hopefully, we can get this done quickly so that we may be able to do something on the 16th. So if this board wants to reappoint Brian Shiffrin and Brian Valentine this evening, then, then we can handle our piece of that.
That make sense to me?
Yep.
All right, all agreed? Okay.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, aggregation, do, I did want to point out, and I had a conversation with a couple of you, I think, last week. As you're probably all well aware, some of the new tax reform legislation that was passed down in Washington, the trickle-down effect has begun. And obviously, some of the residents concerned with the new limitations on what you can deduct for your taxes, for your real estate taxes, is giving some people the, the thought of trying to prepay some of their taxes for next year, specifically quarter three and quarter four of fiscal 18. And the town really received, and not just this town, but municipalities, didn't really get any direction from the Department of Revenue. Something came out about 4:30 last Thursday, you know, giving us really not a whole lot of guidance. The IRS has kind of flip-flopped on whether taking any such, such action would in fact be something they would allow or not allow. I think that's still up in the air. Be that as it may, I just want to let you know, last week, in three days, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, Friday being a four-hour day. It's, it's a half day in, on Fridays here. The treasurer's office took in $2,245,000 at the counter. Another $450,000 in tax payments online. That was in three days. At the counter on Friday morning from 8 until we closed at noon time, we took in $809,000 of that amount. I want to publicly recognize the Assistant Treasurer Collector David Berry and the Benefits, Payroll and Benefits Coordinator Kristen Passacane, as well as Vanessa Hale, the Assistant Manager, who basically worked that counter for four hours on Friday. Now, David and Kristen, you know, provided yeoman's work for the three days, you know, in tot, in total. But Friday, that line was at least 10-deep all morning, and they really did a great job in, in, in handling, in handling the traffic. Very polite, the epitome of customer service, and I just wanted to publicly recognize them for, you know, for what they did, you know. Very, very nice to see that and good representations of what we do and how we do it.
Excellent.
So I think, I think that was everything I had.
If I could just make one comment, I would just also like to recognize DPW staff who sacrificed their Christmas morning to be out clearing our streets for us while many of us were inside opening presents and preparing for those to come visit or for us to go and elsewhere. That, you know, by the time those later activities occurred, the roads were all cleared, so those could happen, and that happened because the DPW workers gave up part of their Christmas, Christmas morning to do that. And I'd like to appreciate their efforts.
Here, here. Well said, Mr. Shea. All right, anything further, Mr. Purple?
No, that's all I have.
All right, we have a, a discussion and possible, but, but approval of management contract for St. Mark's Golf Course. Mr. Purple?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's something that we would go into executive session to discuss the negotiations first, prior, and then coming back out into open.
All right. Consideration of name change for St. Mark's Golf Course.
This is something, and I could defer to Mr. Shiffrin or Mr. Shea, as part of the discussions with the proposed vendor to manage the golf course, as to whether or not the town intended to keep it, St. Mark's Golf Club, or whether they, whether we intended to, to rename the course now that we've taken ownership of it. And I can defer to the two selectmen who sat at the table for the, for the rest of that.
Your thoughts?
Again, it really came up, you know, in the context that St. Mark's is no longer the owner of that golf course and that it is, you know, the property of the town of Southborough now. There was a suggestion made by Mr. Harrison that it be renamed Southborough Links. Discussions earlier with Mr. McCarthy, he had memories that the original name of the course was Southborough Country Club. So I think there may be some benefits to going back to the original name. I think Southborough Links has a good connotation to it as well. I don't know that I'm prepared tonight to, you know, settle in on a new name, but I think the concept of changing the name, you know, part of the reasons as well, there was always a perception that although the sign out front said "public invited," that it is a public course, that because it was St. Mark's Golf Course, there was the perception that it is limited to the school itself. You know, certainly, we want to make this golf course successful and do everything we can to increase the number of participants that we have there. And if a name change contributes to that, then I think I would be in favor of that. Again, I don't know that I'm ready tonight to, to settle in on what the name ought to be.
Mr. Shiffrin, anything to add?
Yeah, the, the proposed management company is the one that's been running it for the previous however many years. And he said it's been a marketing challenge with the perception that it's private. His recommendation was the Southborough Links, and I don't know how much we need to deliberate it, but it was his point that other courses are getting their marketing out or preparing it, at least at this time, for the upcoming season. So I think he would want to know sooner rather than later what the name's gonna be so that they can start doing their work for the, the upcoming season.
Thoughts from the other members? Ms. Faniff?
I think we should rename it for everything that was just stated, but we do have a naming policy.
We do.
It needs to be reviewed by all members, and hopefully, maybe we can get it on the next agenda to take a vote.
Yeah, I think the intention tonight was not, not to take a vote, but simply to determine, does the board want to look at, you know, renaming the course? And if you do, you're absolutely correct. You do have a naming policy in place.
Right, and that should be put out there for the public as well, whatever.
So why don't I read, why don't I redistribute copies of the naming policy to the board, and so you can take a look at that? And then we can put that on as an agenda item for the next meeting.
But in saying that, I'm not, I'm not sure we're necessarily renaming something. We've purchased something. So we might not fall into that category. The land is now ours. It's not St. Mark's. So we may be able to make the decision ourselves.
Sparky, anything to add?
No, just that I am not against changing the name for the reasons that were stated, and thank you also for your negotiating that you two have done on the golf course.
Mostly Brian.
Thank you.
Southborough Country Club also, would that denote possibly private? Is that one of the challenges? It's a nice name, but is that?
Yeah, I didn't ask him about that. I just asked him for his suggestion, but my guess would be that that would pose the same challenge.
Okay. All right, Mr. Purple, you'll lead us.
I will take some. Yes, I'll take care of that, thank you.
Okay, public comment.
It also doesn't seem that accurate, whereas I guess it's a Link-style course, so Southborough. so Southborough Links would seem accurate.
All right. Sir?
Tim Lit, 148 Woodland Road. If you want the golf course name, how about Southborough Municipal Golf Course? Make it simple. I was going to ask for, for my usual update on the Technology Committee, but since Mark managed to preempt it, I did have another comment, however. I did read the notices of those meetings, and they were scheduled to be held in a private office. You may remember that last year I made a comment when a selectman's meeting was scheduled for a private office, that this doesn't indicate that it's open to the public or that the public is encouraged to attend. This particular private office, it's the superintendent's office, has a maximum capacity of maybe six people, and there are about six people on the committee. So, I'm wondering if maybe the selectmen would like to think about having a policy that says that public meetings will be held in rooms that are sufficient for the anticipated, you know, public attendance.
Thank you, sir.
Just to clear, Mr. Lit, just to clarify, I don't believe they're going to actually hold it in her official office, but there is a rather large meeting room.
There's the training room next door.
Just off of, yeah, just off of her.
That's not what the notice said.
You could put quite a few people, well, okay, so when we have a chance to redo it, I'll, I'll mention it, I'll mention it to Ms. Johnson.
I mean, I don't mean to be picky, but it is, it is actually important that the public not feel like they're intruding on something that's private.
Sure.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other comments? Sir?
Hi, Joe Cruciani, 53 School Street. Just really quickly about the co-holder. One thing to take in mind is to ask the management company what they think, because he might, the management company might be afraid if he hears that now I have to jump through, you know, if it's co-held and there's two different bodies, now, not only do I have to get approval from one, I have to get approval from two. And that just might be something that, even if there is real no legal negative connotation, it might scare off people who otherwise, you know, because now it is more, more red tape for me to jump through. Just something to keep in mind.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Mimi Latrell, 19 Oregon Road, speaking as an individual. Couple questions. What if the Conservation Commission votes to not hold the CR? It's one scenario. Or is anyone asked SVT if they would be willing to co-host? And the other question is, why not transfer the fee to the Conservation Commission? So, they would hold the fee and SVT would be the holder of the CR?
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments, public comments? Okay. The board will be entering into executive session per Master General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, to discuss negotiations for the management contract for St. Mark's Golf Course, Exemption 6, for which the Chair has determined that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. The board will be returning to open session at the conclusion of the executive session requires a roll call, vote, call and aye.
Shea, aye.
Shiffrin, aye.
Brushy, aye.
We are in executive session.